Thank you so much.
Good evening and welcome to the stated meeting of June thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. Majority Leader Keith Powers, I want to thank everyone here today for joining us or watching from home. If you would like to follow along, you can follow along on today's, on the website where today's agenda is posted.
Would you please join us for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Abreu.
Present.
Ariola.
Present.
Aviles.
Presente.
Ayala.
Present.
Barron.
They got the Black Panther in the back here, here.
Thank you. Bacher.
Present.
Brannon.
Here.
Brewer.
Here.
Brooks Powers.
Present.
Caban.
Present.
Carr.
Present.
De La Rosa.
Here.
Dinowitz.
Here.
Farias.
Present.
Felice.
Presente.
Gennaro.
Here.
Gutierrez.
Presente.
Hanif.
Here.
Hanks.
Present.
Holden.
Here.
Hudson.
Present.
Joseph.
Present.
Kagan.
Present.
Krishnan.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Lewis.
Present.
Mate.
Present.
Mealy. Menon.
Present.
Moya.
Present.
Narcisse.
Present.
Nurse.
Present.
Osay.
Present.
Palladino.
Present.
Wrestler.
Present.
Richardson Jordan.
Present.
Riley.
Present.
Rivera.
Present.
Salamanca.
Present.
Sanchez.
Present.
Schulman.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Ung.
Present.
Velazquez.
Present.
Vernikov.
Present.
Williams.
I'm here.
Wan.
Present.
Yeager.
Here.
Borelli.
Here.
Powers.
Here.
Speaker Adams.
Present.
Thank you. Invocation.
None.
Adoption of minutes.
None.
Messages and papers from the mayor.
M seventy-four, city debt and reserves.
Received, ordered, printed, and filed.
Communication from city, county, and borough offices.
Pre-considered M seventy-one, transfer funds between agencies.
Finance.
Pre-considered M seventy-two, new city revenues, fiscal year two thousand twenty-two.
Finance.
Petitions and communications.
None.
Land use call-ups.
None.
Thank you. We will now have communication from Speaker Adrian Adams.
Good evening, everyone. As a reminder, masks are encouraged to be worn throughout the stated meeting in council chambers. Today, we're voting on several items related to adoption of the budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three. This budget invests in New Yorkers' health and safety during a time of great challenges. It advances this council's vision of a balanced approach to making our communities safer by strengthening them through key investments in programs and services. As I said on Friday during the budget handshake, none of this could have been possible without the hard work, dedication, and contributions of each and every one of you, so I thank you for helping us reach this moment. I especially want to thank our finance chair, Justin Brannon, our budget negotiating team, and of course, the finance division staff led by Tanisha Edwards. I also want to thank our terrific Legislative Documents Unit staff. Let's give them all a round of applause. This city council secured record amounts of priority investments from our budget response during negotiations with the administration. This funding represents nearly ninety percent of our expense requests, which is unprecedented. These investments will benefit New Yorkers by supporting health and safety, parks and sanitation services, protections for tenants and homeowners, and expanded opportunities for services for our young people and seniors. Reflecting the concerns expressed by many of you, the council also held its ground against unnecessary spending growth on NYPD and additional criminal justice system expenditures that do not make us safer. We successfully pushed back against the proposal to add more correction officers to the Department of Correction because we knew it was unnecessary and would do nothing to solve the agency's issues relative to managing the staff and resources currently in place. As stewards of our city's finances, we took on the responsibility of preparing for the budgetary challenges ahead by adding historic sums to the city's reserves, including an additional seven hundred fifty million dollars to the rainy day fund, bringing the total to just under two billion dollars. This commitment will help cushion the city from budget gaps in the out years. Another historic win for this council in the budget is the strengthening of our budgetary powers to ensure more accountability and transparency in city agency spending. We secured a record eighteen new units of appropriation, including four in HRA to report on fair fares and domestic violence services, four in DOC to shed light on jail operations and health programming, and six in the NYPD to ensure transparency and accountability in their spending. We also negotiated sixty terms and conditions which allow for better oversight of spending for a host of services, and I thank Special Counsel Jim Karas for his hard work in doing that. Notably, the council will have more insight on NYPD overtime spending, the level of sick leave and unstaffed posts with the DOC, and a breakdown of DSNY's litter basket pickups and other sanitation services. These are significant victories for this council because we are now better positioned to hold agencies accountable and exercise our increasing authority within the budget. This is especially important because we consider the budget a year-round process, and we will continue to monitor the impact of this budget will have on our communities throughout the entire fiscal year. We could not have secured these new powers for this institution without the support and strong voices of all of you, and I am grateful for your leadership, colleagues. This budget includes so many critical investments that make our communities healthy and strong. I'd like to highlight just some of the areas where the funding will make a tremendous difference for New Yorkers. The council fought hard for additional investments in programs to benefit our young people and families, including two hundred seventy-seven million dollars for the summerizing program to provide academic enrichment over the summer, seventy-nine million dollars to expand SYEP to a record one hundred thousand slots, and nearly twenty million dollars to double the number of work, learn, and grow slots for year-round youth employment. We're allocating forty-six million dollars to increase wages for special education, pre-K, and daycare providers to support programs that serve our young people, thirty-three million dollars to expand career and technical education, and thirty million dollars for the Fair Futures Initiative to uplift our foster care youth. These are significant wins that will help children and families across our entire city. This budget also prioritizes the health and safety of New Yorkers by investing in care and those who provide it. We secured sixty million dollars for a cost-of-living adjustment for our human ser- I keep saying that, human service workers. We secured this COLA for those who provide critical services for New Yorkers but are not paid what they deserve. The council sought to change this reality and ensure that the workers rightfully receive an adjustment in their salaries. We also prioritized increasing mental health support and outreach for our unhoused neighbors through a nineteen million dollar investment. We are allocating five million dollars for hate crime prevention and support for impacted communities, five million dollars to help students with mental health challenges across direct services and schools, and a two-point-five million dollar investment to create New York State's first trauma recovery centers to support victims of crime. As I announced during Friday's budget handshake, the council will establish a new speaker's initiative to provide each member with one hundred thousand dollars to invest in holistic safety by supporting community safety programs. You, my colleagues, can decide how to best advocate the funding for youth services, housing support, mental health, or ways to strengthen our communities. On housing, this council remains committed to addressing housing insecurity and affordability for New Yorkers. We are investing two hundred thirty-seven million dollars to fully fund rental assistance programs and increase the rate of city PEPs vouchers to match Section Eight levels. We're also expanding funding for drop-in centers, safe haven beds, and stabilization beds to more effectively help New Yorkers experiencing homelessness with one hundred seventy-one million dollars. More than thirty-three million dollars was provided to support HaSeva New Yorkers living with HIV/AIDS. City agencies focused on housing issues must have the necessary funding to do their job to protect New Yorkers, and that's why this budget provides nineteen million dollars to HPD to hire additional staff, five hundred sixty-nine thousand dollars to expand the Office of the Tenant Advocate, and four hundred fifty-two thousand dollars to restore the Source of Income Unit staff at the City Commution for Human Rights. This budget also protects working and middle-class homeowners through a property tax rebate that combined with the state rebate will be at least four hundred forty dollars per homeowner, and for the first time in history, the city's rebate, which was proposed by the council, will go towards small homeowners who are behind on their bills. Additionally, the council will adopt tax rates that minimize impact on homeowners, and the city will request the state to amend the formula for property tax rates to safeguard homeowners who are struggling. And taken together, most small homeowners will see no increase in their property tax burden, and some will even see a decrease. Another way we're helping New Yorkers through this recovery is by investing in a cleaner and greener city. This budget allocates forty-four million dollars for the Parks Department Maintenance and Summer Workforce, and includes additional funding to support urban park rangers, green thumb gardens, forest management, tree stump removal, and much more. We are also adding twenty-two million dollars to support litter basket service pickup six days a week and twice daily. The council pushed to restore sanitation funding for various initiatives, including seven-point-five million dollars for precision cleaning, nearly five million dollars for lot cleaning, and almost five million dollars for rat mitigation, and approximately two million dollars for street cleaning. The budget also includes nine million dollars to enhance the school organics collection program, and also three-point-five million dollars for organics drop-off sites. All of these funding initiatives will make a tremendous difference in the quality of life for our New Yorkers. And finally, this council is delivering on our goal to expand access to services and opportunities for New Yorkers who need it most, starting with the base lining of seventy-five million dollars in the budget for fair fares. The budget allocates forty million dollars for emergency assistance grants for low-income New Yorkers, and thirty million dollars for the Emergency Food Assistance Program. Fifteen million dollars will go to transition our seniors using Get Food Recovery Meals. And we also know, New York City is the culture capital of the world, and our institutions need support. That's why we secured forty million dollars to support our cultural institutions, and sixty-seven million dollars to provide infrastructure and funding support for our three library systems. The council has advanced a total of twenty million dollars for adult literacy, more than eight million dollars to expand language access, and four million dollars for the Low Wage Worker Initiative. In so many ways, in so many ways, this budget is a major investment in New Yorkers to provide what they need and deserve in our collective recovery. The council's work on the budget does not end here, to be clear, and we know there's more work to be do- to do. We will continue to work hard to ensure all communities get increased investments to become stronger and safer. That has always been the focus and priority of this council, and this budget, our very first as a new council, delivers on that vision. And with that, I turn it back into the hands of our majority leader.
Thank you, Speaker Adams. We are going to now move into discussion of general orders. Before we get started on this and then voting, we want to just remember, remind members you have two minutes to explain your vote or on general discussion. We are going to be holding people to the clock based on, out of respect for everyone's time here, and are giving everybody the opportunity to speak, so please keep your remarks to two minutes. Also, a reminder, when you vote, make sure you state your vote, and if you have to do a disclosure, also please disclose on the record as well. We're going to move now first into gen- discussion of general orders. We are going to first call on Minority Leader Joe Borelli.
Thank you, Majority Leader, and thank you, Speaker, on your first budget. Hardy congratulations from my conference and from, I know, a lot of the members who have been very eager to support you in this endeavor, so congratulations. And now, all of us in this chamber, we get to go home, and over the next couple of days, we get to talk to our constituents and let them know some of the good things that we did. It's a part of this job. This is politics. We get elected. We have to let people know the job we did. Rest assured, my folks will know they're going to get some Borelli bucks coming in the mail. I urge you to get a moniker for your name and your property tax rebates. But before we do that, there are some people who don't share in our glory. There are some people who do the work of yeoman, and for the past couple of months, they've worked very hard. So before I ramble on about something else, would you all stand up and give our finance division a round of applause? Okay, I'm still on the clock, guys, so sit down. I want to ramble just briefly about those property tax rebates, which are very good, and ninety million dollars is a lot of money, and I'm sure there are a lot of other competing interests that folks would have preferred they'd gone to in some cases. But if this is your first foray as new members into the property tax world and our property tax system, I want to say welcome. And I want to remind some of you guys that New York City, despite our rebate, will continue to have the most regressive property tax system of any municipality in the United States. I made that up, but I'm pretty sure it's true, and someone can fact-check me. But I challenge any of you to find a system in any city of this country, or really anywhere else in the world for that matter, where millionaires and billionaires in fancy houses pay lower effective tax rates than maids and bus drivers. Find that anywhere else in the world. So I know many of my friends here consider themselves progressives, and that's great. But now, when it comes to this tax, I hope you all really join this fight to push, thankfully, it's not all us, but to push our colleagues in Albany, to push the legislative leaders in Albany and the governor, to reform this system so that there is tax equity for all of us. And I commend some of my former colleagues here who recognize that their districts might actually see increases over time in property taxes. And I hope some of you guys would consider being vocal in this endeavor, because next year, we may not have the money to do a property tax rebate, although I hope we do, because, again, the Borelli bucks hopefully keep flowing, guys. Have a good night, and I urge all of you to vote yes on the budget.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Councilmember Ari Kagan.
Thank you. So I would like to say that I strongly support this budget because it improves public safety, and public safety today is the biggest priority in New York City. It improves sanitation services that residents of New York City were complaining for the last two years at the very least. It increased earned income tax credit, which helps anti-poverty programs that some people are also talking about for a very long time. I'm very happy to see not just Borelli bucks, but everyone's bucks for homeowner relief, you know? So taxpayers' money going to tax- back to taxpayers, which is very good. I'm happy to see additional funding for anti-violence programs, which is definitely will improve public safety in New York City. I'm also definitely supporting significant investments into rainy day fund because we need to be responsible when we vote for a budget. Of course, I strongly support additional investments in childcare, and I love to see this cost-of-living adjustment to human service workers. And finally, of course, I love to see assistance to renters because we love homeowners, but we also love renters as well, and they're struggling in these difficult times. So, of course, budget handshake, budget agreement, always a compromise, tough compromise. But all in all, most of the things I see in this budget are very, very good for New York City, and I strongly support it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Councilmember Charles Barron, who is assured me he's going to stay within the two-minute limit.
Hold this microphone here. You can slide over, and I want to speak to the people. This is not a good budget. This budget cuts just about every city agency, which you heard from the speaker was the amount of money that the council initiative and some agency restores- restorations, one billion. This is a hundred-billion-dollar budget, and Wall Street made fifty-eight billion dollars profit, which brought in another three billion unexpected from this council this year, and another one-point-five billion unexpected. There should be no pegs, no agency cuts to vital services, including for our seniors and including for mental health. The police budget, talking about they did something to the police budget, eleven billion dollars for fifty thousand police officers, and crime is going through the roof. The cure violence teams, the crisis management systems, a hundred million dollars. They do better work in our communities. We are getting cut all over the place. We had an opportunity now with ten billion dollars to work with. We could have restored cuts. We could have restored all of those federal dollars that's running out, and they did nothing to deal with. Most of your communities have thirty percent poverty and fifteen, fourteen percent double-digit unemployment. Most of you here for the first time, so you went for the annual budget dance, where you just look at council initiatives and not the rest of the budget. So we really need to look at, they didn't commit to the housing. He's too busy moving the encampments of the homeless than to provide permanent housing for the homeless. You blew a golden opportunity to do ten times more, and you're not going to get it too often. This is not a people's budget. This is the Adams Family budget, and we should vote it down.
Thank you, Councilmember Barron. I'm going to ask members, please, deliver remarks from your seats from now on, please. You have a name on your seat. Please deliver remarks from the seat that has your name on it. Anybody else like to speak on general orders? Okay, we're going to now move into the report. I'll wait for Madam Speaker. Report of special committees.
None.
Report of standing committees.
Report of the Committee on Finance, Intro three forty-seven, Tax Code Suspension.
Coupled on general orders with message of necessity.
Pre-considered Reso two twenty-one, base percentage.
Coupled on general orders.
Pre-considered Reso two twenty-two, adjusted base proportion.
Coupled on general orders.
Pre-considered Reso two twenty-three, current base proportion.
Coupled on general orders.
Pre-considered Reso two twenty-four, transparency resolution.
Coupled on general orders.
M fifty and Reso's two twenty-five and two twenty-six, expense revenue contract budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three.
Coupled on general orders.
M fifty-one and Reso's two twenty-eight and two twenty-seven and two twenty-eight, executive capital budget fiscal year two thousand twenty-three.
Coupled on general orders.
M fifty-two and Reso two twenty-nine, fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, community development program.
Couple on general orders.
Pre-considered M seventy-one and pre-considered Reso two thirty, transfer of city funds.
Coupled on general orders.
Pre-considered M seventy-two and pre-considered Reso two thirty-one, appropriation of new revenues.
Coupled on general orders.
M thirty-five and Reso two thirty-two, DOE, SCA, five-year capital plan.
Coupled on general orders.
Pre-considered M seventy-three and pre-considered Reso two thirty-three, fixing the tax rate fiscal year two thousand twenty-three.
Coupled on general orders.
M twenty-one through M fifty-six, various budget documents.
Coupled to be filed.
Gen- excuse me, general orders calendar, Intro one seventy-nine A.
Laid over, and I would now ask that the clerk take a roll call vote on all of the items coupled on today's general orders calendar.
Abreu.
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Majority Leader. It is often said that a budget is not just an accounting document, but a reflection of our values. If that's the case, then this one represents a huge step forward to turn our values into action. This budget means progress, and if we are true to our principles, it is time to put progress over politics. In this budget, we have secured over one-point-one billion dollars in additional funding for our priorities. That represents ninety percent of the council's expense funding requests. Where I went to school, we call that an A grade, or double A for Adrian Adams. By prioritizing equity and funding historically underserved communities, we are paving the way for our city's success. I am especially proud of our investments in youth employment, mental health support, supplemental sanitation services, and childcare for undocumented New Yorkers. Not only that, I'm proud that this budget will bring back serious investment to Upper Manhattan, historic even, supporting our schools, resource centers, community groups, and families. Every single New Yorker will benefit from this budget, which was built through a collaborative process that incorporated the needs and know-how of council districts across this great city. That's why we're able to vote on it earlier than any budget in recent memory. I want to thank Speaker Adrian Adams and the Finance Committee for their work on this transformative, historic, progressive budget, and Jalisa Quigley, my deputy chief of staff and budget director, for helping me navigate this process. Joe Buck's, Sean Scheckels are coming. I vote aye.
Thank you. Councilmember, can you confirm your vote, please? Councilmember, Councilmember Abreu, please.
I said I vote aye.
Thank you.
That's the last thing I said.
Councilmember, do you have any disclosures to make? Okay, go ahead.
Ariola. Aviles.
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
First, many of you know I'm fair, if nothing, and it is important to me to acknowledge that there are some real advancements in this budget. And I know many of that there are some real advancements in this budget. And I know many of my colleagues and central staff worked very hard to negotiate those and I thank you. We are finally going to see more than one unit of appropriation for the NYPD, an agency that has ran wild with our tax dollars with zero accountability. I recognize that this is a significant first step that took political will, but let me be clear that transparency without accountability means nothing, especially around a lack of curtailment of overtime and repeated use of failed tactics that directly harm people. Under this budget, NYPD resources will continue to grow and the department will continue to run roughshod over whatever we allocate towards overtime, among other things. We have decades of receipts to know better. Way before the pandemic, New York City public schools were inequitable with poor communities experiencing overcrowding and chronic underfunding. Our children, families and communities are in crisis. So to call the cuts to schools in my district that we are facing a rightsizing due to dips in enrollment is a slap in the face. This budget allows critical resources to be sucked up by aggressive hiring of more safety officers while principals in my district are horrified to make decisions of excising staff after school programs and necessary supports and cult and and coaches that are needed. And mind you, these cuts are compounding. It is not just fair student funding, but next year, our children will continue to face bigger classes, no after-school programs and less family supports. And yet, we invest in initiatives that require individualized staff and celebrate them. This is a mere contradiction. It is unconscionable to cut school budgets right now while we sit on unspent federal funds. How we spend money matters. And I will say one last thing.
Take your vote as well, Councilmember.
We are facing an unprecedented crisis in the housing arena. The number one concern for New Yorkers, as pointed out in the mayor's New York City Speaks survey, and what this budget does about that is nothing. It commits a paltry 2.5 billion over 10 years in capital dollars. And the privatization of NYCHA is unconscionable as the public housing chair.
Councilmember, could you get your vote?
Yes, you may. Our work continues, rest assured. We are focused, we are resolved and like Shirley Chisholm, unbossed and unbought, I vote no on this budget.
Councilmember, the rest of the items?
Can you repeat the question?
No on M50 and M51, aye on the rest.
Oh, okay. Thank you. I'm still new at this.
Go ahead.
No on expense and capital and aye on the rest.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you.
One moment. Hold on one second. We'll stand at ease for one second. Go ahead and make your disclosure.
Make my disclosure. I, I am disclosing on the record of the council proceedings that the New York City Department of Education is funded in the budget we are adopting and my two children are public school, are, are students at this entity and that the New York City Parks Department is funded in the budget that we are adopting and my sister is an employee of this entity.
Thank you.
Good.
Ayala.
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
Thank you. First and foremost, I want to disclose on the record of the city council proceedings that Park East High School is funded in this budget that we're adopting and my child is a student at Park East High School and that AHRC is funded in this budget that we're adopting and my partner is associated with this entity. The Children's Aid Society is funded in this budget that we're adopting and my son is associated with this entity. Heritage High School is funded in the budget and we are that we're adopting and my son is associated with that entity and I don't have 100 sons. There are just two. They just happen to be everywhere. But before I cast my vote, I just want to, you know, I want to thank, I want to give a heartfelt thank you to the entire finance team for all of their tireless work. I don't, I don't know that, you know, many members know, but you know, they worked around the clock for weeks and weeks on end, going back and forth negotiating this budget with the mayor's team. And no budget is perfect. I don't think that you can erase years and years of this investment in one budget, two budgets, three, three budgets even. And yeah, we had a really good year this year financially. However, you know, I, I just want people to know that we did the best that we could with the resources that we had and I think that we walked out of this, out of budget negotiating with a really, really good budget. And that there are areas where, you know, I'm sure that people will find, you know, that we could have done more. But the budget doesn't end. Conversations don't end with adoption. Conversations will continue throughout the year and this body is willing and, you know, looking forward to having more robust conversations with the community, with stakeholders on how we can do just that. But I am not one to throw the baby out with the bathwater and I think this is an exceptional budget and I think that you guys did an awesome job and I want to thank all of my colleagues at budget negotiating. And with that, I vote aye on all.
Thank you. Councilmember, do you have any disclosures to make? Councilwoman Ayala.
I did, I disclosed.
You did. Thank you.
Again?
Barron.
Me? Oh.
Councilmember Barron.
Oh, thank you, thank you. May I be excused at the same vote? I just want to put on the record that my son works for Brick, the Brooklyn Information and Culture funded by this council. Let me say this to you. You're going to hear over for the people on the balcony, this is not a perfect budget. Been hearing that for 12 years. They shouldn't even use the word perfect with this budget. You're also going to hear we did the best we can. No. Much more could have been done. Let's take the rebate. The rebate for 440 dollars. In November, there'll be a hike in property tax, but they're going to minimize the hike. That rebate is going to be taken right back from them in November. How about the capital budget? Did any of you read the capital budget? Do you know that there's billions in there for building more inner-city jails for your people in black and brown communities? Billions of dollars for jails? How about jobs? Did you see the job, the workforce development program? 1.7 billion, billion dollars. 1.7 million for workforce development. I say jobs, not jails. Why would we do that in our communities that have double-digit unemployment? 1.7 million for workforce development. 4 billion, 5 billion for jails. Do you know how much overtime money police get paid? 513 million dollars and they added more in this budget for overtime. The police overtime is one-third of the 1.4 billion that the whole city pays for overtime. Our people don't commit crimes because there's not enough police, there are not enough jobs, too much poverty and much too much unemployment and mental health issues, all cut. I vote no on all items except pre-considered Reso 224. I vote yes. Everything else, no.
Thank you. Botcher.
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
Someone was joking that I should take the B off my first name so I won't have to follow Councilmember Barron for the next seven years. But I am proud to serve with this body. I'm very, very proud to serve with so many dedicated public servants who, you're all doing such incredible work representing your community here at City Hall and out in your districts and we're not always going to agree, Lord knows we won't, but I'm very proud to serve with all of you. And I'm also very proud of this budget, which is going to do so much to help us address the various crises affecting our city. The homelessness crisis, the mental health crisis, the sanitation crisis. I'm very happy that we are restoring corner basket service to not just pre-pandemic levels, but greater than pre-pandemic levels. Overflowing waste baskets in all our communities, the basic thing we have to do and we're doing it in this budget. One issue that isn't being resolved prior to adoption that I do look forward to working on is the issue of school funding and spending at the Department of Education because schools in my district are facing large cuts and we're talking about an agency with a 38 billion dollar budget. We're increasing the budget of the DOE with this budget, but some of my schools are telling me that they're going to have to consolidate three classes per grade into two with over 30 kids in a grade. That's not okay with me, so let's work on that. Let's stop that from happening. Thanks to my Finance Chair, Wyn Peri Asami, my Chief of Staff, Sean Coughlin, my co-chair in the Manhattan delegation, Councilmember Chris Marte, and Speaker Adams and all of you. I vote aye.
Thank you. Brennan.
Permission to explain my vote?
Yeah, I'll give you a permission.
Thank you. This budget is a down payment on New York City's comeback. Not the way it was, but the way it should be. From day one, this council said our recovery would require real and meaningful investments in every community. We knew we couldn't cut our way to prosperity, so we doubled down on what matters. We are a city of communities and now more than ever, hard-working New Yorkers from Soundview to Soho, from Dykman Street to Diker Heights, they want to know their elected officials are working overtime to make their lives better. This city council heard that clarion call and fought hard to deliver a prompt budget with both record investments and record reserves, a budget that puts money directly into the communities and back into the pockets of working families. I'm proud of my colleagues and the dedicated finance team who spent countless hours, late nights and weekends, working behind the scenes on this council's first budget. I thank Speaker Adams for fostering an incredibly transparent and collaborative negotiation process and all of my colleagues for working together to deliver on our shared priorities of a stronger, fairer, safer and more prosperous city for all. I vote aye on all.
Thank you. Brewer.
Thank you very much. I too want to thank Speaker Adrian Adams, the finance staff led by Tanisha Wright Edwards and including Jonathan Rosenberg, Jim Karas, Ayesha Wright, Paul Simone, James Reyes, Ray Majeski and Zoom Maverick Malcolm Butcorn for all of their work, as well as Chief of Staff Jeremy John, Carlos Beto, Special Counsel to the Speaker and all the Sergeant-at-Arms for all of their responsiveness during this time. And I do want to thank Jeff Rotis on the mayor's side and Ivan Acosta at OMB because they used to work for the city council and they certainly did a great job. On my staff, Leo Bolero, Eddie Amador, Jack Wild and Shuler Pooter, there are so many highlights. One of them, of course, is clean streets. Six days a week is a major aspect for picking up litter twice a day. Parks to be cleaned with gardeners, horticulturists, not people at the arsenal. Winning the appropriation for figuring out how to get rid of hate, violence, prevention is important. I totally want to thank the Speaker for the community safety initiatives and Jim Karas, 30 years trying to get those goddamn agencies to do what they're supposed to do with the units of appropriation. That's impressive. As Chair of Oversight Investigation, something small, but I'm glad that the Department of Investigation will have 18 new investigators to watch for fraud, waste and abuse. Affordable housing is perhaps the number one issue in all of our districts and I'm pleased that there's $5 billion, not always spent in the right way in terms of NYCHA, but $5 billion over 10 years. I do want to thank the Speaker again for the hotel conversion bill that passed in Albany and I want HTC, that's the union, to help us convert hotels in Manhattan to permanent supportive housing. Thank you very much for seniors, cultural libraries, youth and COLAS. We need to make sure that our human service agency staff get paid and this is the beginning. And during the summer, we will look with the Education Committee and Oversight Investigation, where the hell is that 4.5 billion dollars of federal funding that nobody knows where it is?
Go ahead and register your vote.
Thank you very much. I vote aye.
Thank you. Brooks Powers.
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
It's hard to believe just a few short months ago, we were holding our first preliminary hearings, but today is the culmination of our hard work as we vote to enact this 101 billion dollar budget. We have a new administration, we have a new speaker and our new slate of council members is more diverse than ever before. That has granted us a profound opportunity. Each of us has brought extensive experience and knowledge to the table and offered fresh perspectives in the, in the negotiation process. I am deeply proud of the work that my colleagues have done to advocate and contribute every day for the needs of our communities. This is a people-centered budget that puts New Yorkers first. We have made critical investments to safeguard New Yorkers' health, keep our neighbors housed and build a safer, cleaner public space for all. We were able to secure a record 900 million dollars towards safer streets. And in partnership with my colleagues, we negotiated a $90 million property tax rebate to help support our working and middle-class homeowners. While there is more work to be done to address the property tax inequities, this property tax relief will make a small contribution to homeowners I heard all across Southeast Queens asking, what about us? This investment combined with fully funding city FEPs demonstrate working on behalf of New Yorkers does not have to be an either/or. It can be an and. And as the city council continues to open back up, many of our community-based organizations are looking to return to full capacity. And in this budget, we also will fund their vital work to help our city deliver, deliver critical services to residents. I wish to congratulate Speaker Adrian Adams on her very first budget as Speaker and I thank her for her transparency throughout this entire budget process, as well as Finance Chair Brennan. Also special thanks to Tanisha Edwards and the phenomenal finance team, the folks that are in the background that we never hear from but are doing the work, Chief of Staff Jeremy John and also Faiza. This is a budget that gave each and every member an opportunity to have a voice in this process. Once again, I am proud to stand with my colleagues in government and see this budget through and I proudly vote aye. Thank you. And I will just also disclose, I am disclosing on the record of the council proceedings that Queens Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated is funded in the budget we are adopting and I am associated with this nonprofit and that Queens Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated is funded in the budget we are adopting and a member of my staff is associated with this nonprofit. Eagle Academy is funded in the budget we are adopting and a member of my staff is associated with this entity and that Rochdale Village Social Services is funded in the budget and we, that we are adopting and a member of my staff is associated with this entity. Thank you.
Thank you. Kaban.
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
First, I would like to disclose that Elm Jack Little League is funded in the budget we are adopting and I coach Little League alongside former Councilmember Konstantinidis for this organization every week. Comparing this final budget to its preliminary and executive predecessors, it's clear that we as a council have much to be proud of. We prevented the worst cuts to homeless services, sanitation and parks. We brought some transparency to the NYPD's fiscal operations. We stopped an increase in headcount for the NYPD and 500 proposed new solitary confinement officers for Rikers Island. We included some key investments, including one I'm especially proud to have fought for, funding to extend childcare to our undocumented neighbors, friends and family. I'd like to congratulate the Speaker and her team, Chair Brennan and the finance staff and the mayor's office for working together to accomplish these improvements. I want to tell you I am casting a no vote today. The people of the 22nd District elected me with a mandate to fight for a dramatic shift of our city's priorities away from policing, prosecution and punishment and towards community, compassion and care. This budget does not do that. It contains big cuts to our public schools disproportionately affecting schools in low-income communities of color, which have been long underfunded and overcrowded. Any decrease in enrollment should be seen as rightsizing the budget, not warranting further cuts. I agree with the comptroller that this budget falls well short of the investments we need in housing. in housing, especially at a time when the average New Yorker's rent is double the average New Yorker income. Lastly, it keeps our current bloated levels of funding for policing and incarceration intact, and fails to increase funding to data-driven, community-based violence prevention programs. And so it's for all of these reasons that I cannot in good conscience vote for it. Without moving away from violent and oppressive systems, we are undermining the very investments I'm so glad that we managed to include in this budget, and ensuring that their potential positive impacts are nowhere near as substantial as they could and should be. And so in the coming years, I will remain prepared to support a budget that reflects my commitment to care, not cages, and it is because of that commitment that the people of District 22 sent me here. It is with their needs and their dreams in my heart that I vote no on the expense and capital budgets, M-50 and M-51, and aye on the rest. Thank you.
De La Rosa.
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
I would like to thank Speaker Adams and the leadership team for their hard work in shepherding this process forward over the last several months, and as a civil service and labor chair, I must also acknowledge and thank all of the staff, finance staff, and others who have spent countless hours working behind the scenes to make today's vote possible. Today's vote, today's budget vote marks a historic shift for our city in a multitude of ways. We did not get everything we wanted, and despite the many concerns that some of us may still have, I congratulate my colleagues for pushing forward and pushing hard to address the historic needs that have existed in our communities for decades. I am proud to support the unprecedented levels of transparency measures to the NYPD budget through the new units of appropriation that will strengthen the council's negotiating powers as we look to insert justice into our criminal legal system. This budget delivers significant investments for our youth, like funding a record number of summer youth employment positions and year-round positions, as well as investing in arts and culture. We increased funding for essential sanitation services, housing, and assistance for our unhoused neighbors. This budget also makes significant strides towards the inclusion and investment of immigrant New Yorkers. I applaud the investment and expansion of community school models, and finally, I am proud that we will be, we will finally be baselining the COLA for human service workers. While I am proud of what we have achieved, I also stand here with a heavy heart as we are voting for a budget that will result in the loss of millions of dollars for our classrooms. As a District 6 parent, I understand and share the very real concerns of parents and school leaders across the city. This budget should safeguard the needs of our schoolchildren who need support given the realities of the last two years during the pandemic. I am additionally concerned because we have an important and long-awaited mandate from the state to reduce class sizes. While most, while we must work to ensure that this problem is solved swiftly, I have the confidence in the leadership of Speaker Adams and Education Chair Rita Joseph to pursue every possible avenue to address this issue of federal funding. Together with everyone in this chamber, I commit to working to guarantee oversight and accountability as budget adjustments are made later this year. Today's budget will not solve all our challenges. This fight is far from over. Tomorrow, we wake up and get back to work fighting for more investment, transparency, dignity, and justice for our community. I vote yes tonight to move this forward, but acknowledge that despite the many transformative items in this budget, there are many changes that we need to push for future budgets. Thank you. And I would like to disclose on the record for this council proceeding that the New York City Department of Education is funded in this budget we are adopting, and my daughter is a student at this entity. Uptown Stories is funded in this budget we are adopted, and my daughter is associated with this entity. And Washington Heights Tennis Association is funded in this budget we are adopting, and my daughter is associated with this agency. She'll be very busy, and thank you, Madam Speaker, and your leadership team for all of your work.
Thank you. Dinowitz.
Permission to explain my vote, Majority Leader?
Go ahead.
Okay, first, I'm disclosing on the record of the council proceeding that New York Presbyterian Columbia University Irving Medical Center is funded in the budget we're adopting, and my mom is an employee of that entity. And I'm sure my mom's watching, so whatever camera is on, hi, hi, Mom, love ya. She loves me, what can I do? She's, you know, it's fun. For my, yeah. No, I'll talk about my mom instead of the budget. You know, she's, she's one of those moms, she'd be very proud, I think, of me and all of us here, and I know most moms are proud of their kids, but not my mom, not all the time, you know? Like in Little League, she would, she wouldn't really say like, "Good swing," you know? If I swing and missed, she, she wouldn't say, "Nice try." But this budget, I think, is like a home run. You know, there's a lot of good stuff in this budget that I think, as a mother, and importantly, as a resident of New York City, as a constituent, as all, as my kid's grandmother is really proud of, because, you know, I'm thinking like so many of our investments in education, and I think about the city in which I'm raising my children, and our investments in CUNY, right? Significant investments in programs like CUNY Reconnect, you know, supporting people who have some of those credits, really need to get back on track, support for remedial education. And often budgets feel intangible, you know, all of these, we hear about budgets on the news, and all these billions of dollars, where do they go? But we are going to feel the impact of this budget. People are going to be re-engaging in school. It's $33-plus million for CTE education programs, providing more opportunities for our children, diversifying the offerings of our public school system, and engaging children in a system that is too often, I know, that too often leaves so many of our children behind. I just, before I tell you how I'm going to vote, which is unclear, I know, at this point, I just have to thank our speaker first, who did such an incredible job of listening to all of us, really incorporating our needs in this budget. Every one of my colleagues, especially those of my friends on the budget negotiating team, and especially the finance staff who are sitting in these chairs in the corner. These chairs should be damn grown.
How do you vote, Councilmember Dinowitz?
And I vote yes.
Thank you. Farias.
That's me. I am disclosing on the record of the council proceedings that NYU Langon is funded in the budget we are adopting, and my parent is associated with this entity, and that New York City Department of Education Junior High School 127 Castle Hill School is funded in the budget and transparency reso we are adopting, and my sibling is associated with this entity. Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
While today marks our city's budget adoption, it also means the beginning of a new fiscal cycle with new opportunities. We are fortunate enough to be standing in a room with many members who were born and raised in their communities they now represent. Many of us have seen years of divestment in our neighborhoods and come ready to bring real investments back home, myself included. This budget, though not free of imperfections, is focused on all-year-round needs and centered on recovery for all communities. Creating pathways for employment is key to our city's recovery and economic well-being. That is why the council fought for and secured $13.9 million for adult literacy programs, IT education for older adults, the Low Wage Workers Initiative, and additional workforce development centers. To me, recovery is also about preparing for the future of our city and prioritizing our youth. As federal funding has declined, the council has given a $700 million increase to the Department of Education. Public safety and the success of our children not only comes from inside the classroom, and that is why it is crucial that we invest in giving our kids and parents real options for after-school. The budget does so by investing a collective $356 million for summer youth employment and summer rising programs. We still have so much work to do on the NYPD budget. Our students and schools still need more investments. There's still a housing and homelessness crisis on our streets, and many of our highest-revenue industries are still struggling, including the hotel industry, which employs more than 50,000 people, predominantly immigrants and people of color. We need to act now and keep fighting for our workers and provide relief to the industries that will fuel our city's recovery. Balancing our fiduciary responsibilities with the bold changes we want to make is not an easy task, nor one that is accomplished without a heavy heart. This budget will serve as a framework and a first step as we enter into a new fiscal year. Our work is not done after tonight's vote, and I intend to work with our partners at all levels of government to keep fighting for investments in our workforce to ensure that we are recovering equitably, and that our outer boroughs, especially those in the Bronx, are not left behind.
How do you vote?
Lastly, I'd like to thank the speaker, Adrian Adams, for your leadership, the hard work and dedication of Council Finance Division. I'm proud to have worked with everyone in this room, and in every room that I'm in and every table I have a seat at, I wear the heart of my community.
Councilmember, how do you vote?
That raises me on my sleeve. I vote aye on all for my community. Thank you.
Thank you. Felice.
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Our city faces many challenges, some of them which have existed for a very long time, and some which only became worse due to the coronavirus pandemic. I am proudly voting yes on this budget, a budget which will help resolve the many problems that our city faces. Our children, our children have been asking for help. They've been asking for resources, so we expanded the summer youth employment program so that it can cover no less than 100,000 youth, 100,000 slots during the summer. Our families, our families have struggled with affordable rents in the city of New York, so we increased the city FEP's rent levels to match the federal Section A program to make finding affordable housing just a little bit easier. Far too often, last but not least, far too often, victims of crimes, victims of crimes go through the horror of being a victim, and even worse, they feel like they are left out in the cold on their own, not under our watch, because we're going to be giving them the resources that they need and they deserve to be able to recover. In this budget, we're investing in our children, we are investing in our families, we are investing in the city of New York, so I want to congratulate our speaker, Adrian Adams, and I also congratulate this city council on this historic budget, and I'm proudly voting yes. And before I conclude, I'm disclosing on the record of the council proceedings that CUNY Hostels Community College in the Bronx is funded in this budget we're adopting, and I am a proud adjunct professor at this entity. Thank you so much. I vote yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Brooks Powers.
Hi, I'd just like to add to my disclosure that Martin Depore's Youth and Family Services is funded in the budget we are adopting, and a member of my family is associated with this nonprofit.
Thank you. Gennaro.
Aye.
Thank you. Gutierrez.
I wasn't ready.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
Permission to explain my vote? I wasn't ready, it was too fast.
I was going to say, all right, go ahead.
I want to, before that, I'm just disclosing on the record of the council proceedings that the New York City Department of Social Services is funded in this budget we are adopting, and my husband is an employee of this entity, and that New York City Health and Hospitals is funded in the budget we are adopting, and my sister is an employee of this entity. I want to recognize Speaker Adams, Council Finance, and Council Leadership for all of your work. This budget secured unprecedented transparency measures from the NYPD, which includes requiring the PD to share how they spend our money and when they are paying out hundreds of millions in overtime. This budget is serving those who are left out of federal and state budgets year after year by securing $10 million for undocumented and immigrant neighbors and their access, and the access that these families have to childcare. Community schools funding will be restored, and thanks to this budget, and opportunities for expansion is made possible because of this budget. We'll have to fight again next year. For my families of Bushwick, the South Side, the rest of Williamsburg, and Ridgewood, this means something, but we have to do more because we are consistently asking New Yorkers to do more with less. We have to do more because those that will continue to lose will be tenants, our public schools, and Black and Brown New Yorkers. If we don't push, if we don't push the DOE to change its funding criteria based on enrollment, schools in gentrifying communities and neighborhoods where people have been pushed out, our public schools will always face enrollment issues. The city has supported real estate in displacing our families faster and more meaningfully than we've invested in our own schools that are for everyone. 23 of my schools are facing cuts, and that's not nothing. We must invest. Schools thrive, communities thrive when we invest where it matters. Finally, I hope that these monumental units of appropriation translate to an end to abusive units that regularly harm New Yorkers, like the vice unit or the Strategic Response Group. Today, I'm voting aye, and to my six-month-old, who I am not putting to bed tonight because I am here on my first budget, I'm coming home, baby. Thank you.
Thank you. Hanif.
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
I vote aye, and I do so with complicated feelings. There's a lot to be proud of in this budget. Thank you, Speaker Adams, colleagues in the budget negotiating team, and council staff for your work to get us here. The mayor's executive budget included a $180 million increase to the NYPD's budget, and we were able to get that removed. It also included the hiring of 578 new corrections officers, and we got that removed as well. I'm proud that we were able to win the Care for All campaign that I fought for alongside Councilmember Caban, Comptroller Lander, and our incredible advocacy partners. That's $10 million for childcare for undocumented families, an important step towards our vision of a feminist and anti-racist city. We also secured an increase of $6.7 million for adult literacy programs, which are a lifeline for immigrant New Yorkers in communities like my home of Kensington in District 39. I'm also immensely proud that this budget will fund the launch of a community language interpreter bank and three worker co-ops for African, Asian, and Indigenous Latinx languages of limited diffusion. This is a damn big win for the language justice, community-oriented workforce development in our city. But there are also aspects of this budget that I'm deeply uncomfortable with. At more than $11 billion, the NYPD budget is embarrassingly bloated. When we look at unaddressed needs in other agencies, it's shameful to see $307 million for police and schools that traumatize our students of color, $12.7 million for the vice unit that harasses sex workers, $68.1 million for the Strategic Response Group that assaults peaceful protesters. We are paying salaries of corrections officers who don't show up for work while failing to meet the supportive housing needs of people released from Rikers. This budget also includes deeply flawed reprehensible cuts to the education budget. Quite simply, our students and teachers deserve more. After two brutal years, we need to be investing in the future of our city, not taking, not asking them to do, to make do with less. I'm furious about these cuts. To my beloved public school communities, know that I have your back. I will work with everything that I have to prevent losing the staff and programs that make our schools whole. I'm committed to the schools in my district and my colleagues, and I will be working towards an equitable budget for every school in this city. Our city is struggling to recover from the economic and personal toll that COVID-19 has caused. We were elected with the mandate of seeing our city through this unprecedented and difficult time and ensuring we emerge better than we were before. This budget, while it is far from perfect, is a step closer to getting us there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hanks.
Yes, I'll say something I don't normally say, which is permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
I would like to extend a huge thanks to Speaker Adams, the incredible central staff and finance staff, the finance chair, Justin Brennan, and especially my partners in the Staten Island delegation, the minority leader, Joe Borelli, and Councilmember David Carr. My colleagues in New York City Council, thank you so much for this incredible experience, the teamwork, the collaboration, and leadership on a budget that serves and prioritizes all New Yorkers, and with that, I vote aye.
Thank you. Holden.
I am disclosing on the record of the council proceedings that New York Presbyterian Hospital is funded in the budget we are adopting, and my son is associated with this entity, and that the City University of New York is funded in the budget we are adopting, and my son is a faculty member at this entity. And I'd just like to thank Speaker Adams for an on-time, early budget. Thank you, Finance Division, and all of my colleagues who work so hard, Justin Brennan. And this budget, again, is one of the best we voted on, and it does a lot of good things, especially for the victimism crime, and so that's why I'm voting aye on all, except for Reso 221, Reso 222, Reso 233, and the pre-considered M-73, of which I vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. One moment.
I'd first like to commend Speaker Adams, Chair Brennan, members of the budget negotiating team, and all of the staff for working around the clock to craft a budget that's team, and all of the staff for working around the clock to craft a budget that surpasses the administration's initial proposals and gets closer to meeting the needs of our city's most vulnerable. This budget has some big wins: $237 million to expand city FEPs, $79.4 million baseline for SYEP expansion, $75 million baseline for Fair Fairs expansion, $40 million to support our cultural organizations, and $10 million in childcare for undocumented families, among other accomplishments. These achievements are the result of the council's tireless advocacy on behalf of our communities and the often unrecognized hard work of the advocates who have long pushed for these investments. I came here to deliver for older adults like my late mother Carol, who could not get access to the resources and services they needed. In my mother's name and in her legacy, I'm proud to have done that and deliver more than $80 million in new investments for older adults, including $60 million for cost-of-living adjustments for human service workers who provide essential services for older adults, $15 million to ensure seamless transition for older adults using Get Food Recovery Meals, $3.5 million for IT for older adults, and $802,000 baseline for NYCHA senior social clubs. This budget isn't perfect. I wanted to ensure that we did not add a single NYPD officer to the force after we've seen an over-investment in police and under-investment in our public hospitals, public housing, and public schools, and we succeeded. Even with a former cop as mayor and the increasingly misguided and boisterous calls for cities across the country to revert to racist and ineffective punitive measures to address public safety, we held the line. But we need to do much, much more. Even with no additional officers, the PD budget is still too high. I will keep fighting to reduce the NYPD's budget and reallocate it in programs that will support our communities. Our fight isn't over. We haven't seen a housing plan from the mayor, even though we're in the middle of a housing crisis and need adequate funding to build deeply affordable housing to ensure Black and Brown New Yorkers aren't displaced. We see school funding threatened, leading the council to push the mayor to ensure schools are fully funded come the next school year, and I will continue to fight to ensure that happens. Simply put, this is our mandate. This is why we were elected, to deliver. We're fighting an uphill battle against a system that was designed to protect the interests of the wealthy and powerful to the detriment of marginalized communities that have never been invested in. This budget is a testament to the work we've done, our charge as the first majority female council, the most diverse council ever, and a council with the largest progressive caucus to date. It is our responsibility to continue moving forward year after year in advancing the principles of equity and justice that we have campaigned on. We will continue to raise this floor. Our city depends on it, and I'm coming to you. I'm disclosing on the record of the council proceedings
Slow down.
Planned Parenthood of Greater New York is funded in the budget we are adopting, and my domestic partner is an employee of this nonprofit, and that Museum of the City of New York is funded in the budget we are adopting, and my domestic partner is affiliated with this entity. And with that, I vote aye, and thank you for the additional time.
Thank you. Joseph?
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
Thank you. We know that it will take more than one fiscal year to recover. I believe that this budget set us on a path towards equitable recovery. As a teacher and a chairwoman of education, I'm deeply heartbroken that the schools are cutting $215 million from our classroom and plan to assess teachers while voting for not allowing more police into the, into the system. We knew there would be a loss of federal funding that should have led the mayor to move the dollars to cover the gaps. We spent far more too much on policing. We must shift the money from our criminal system justice into our schools, but that will keep all of us safe in the long run. The fight is not over. We will be watching the DOE budget like a hawk, conducting thorough oversight and accountability to ensure that every New York City public school, student, teacher, principal, has what they need to drive, to thrive. I hope that we will stand here next year having passed a budget that put kids before cops and making meaningful cuts in a bloated NYPD budget. Thank you. I'm gonna, I am gonna disclose on the record proceeding that my son is a student at Department of Education and also have a student. My son is also affiliated with UFT. And I vote aye on all.
Thank you. Kagan?
I would like to disclose that my daughter is a public school student, though she is graduating next week, and budget will be due on July 1st. She's planning to enroll in CUNY College. She is not enrolled yet, but still she's planning to enroll in CUNY College, and I just wanted to disclose it. And I'm voting yes on the budget. I already explained my reasons. I believe it's a very, very good budget, and it's a product of negotiation, so I support it. Yes, aye.
Thank you. Krishnan?
I am disclosing on the record of the council proceedings that the Bronx Defenders is funded in the budget we are adopting, and my wife is an employee of this entity, and that, too, the New York City Department of Education is funded in the budget we are adopting, and my son is a student at this entity. There are major achievements in this budget to be proud of. Brand-new funding to provide childcare for undocumented families that are so often excluded from city services, a low-wage worker initiative, and of course, I'm proud that we've achieved the historic investment in New York City's parks. We won baseline permanent funding to protect the jobs of hundreds of parks workers that were, that were on the verge of losing their positions. Seared in my mind are the conversations and the faces of the workers I've talked to, the letters I've received from park workers deeply concerned about their jobs. To all of them, these permanent investments in your jobs is a result of your work. Thank you for all you do to take care of our parks every single day. We also won funding for our natural areas, forestry, and green thumb gardens. We restored funding for parks equity. This is just the beginning, and we will keep working with the mayor to achieve his promise of 1% or $1 billion for parks for New York City. And beyond this historic investment, we've also achieved unprecedented accountability measures over the NYPD and the Department of Corrections, reversing the proposal for roughly 600 officer increased headcount. For the first time ever, the Department of Corrections will have to open its books and expose the full cost of sick leave abuse and the full scale of the humanitarian disaster and crisis that is Rikers Island. Our work ahead remains greater board of corrections oversight, among other measures, closing Rikers Island, and finally ending solitary confinement. On a final note, I have to acknowledge that I am deeply troubled about our schools with this budget. Our students are our top priority. Thank you to Speaker Adams, Oversight Chair Gail Brewer, and of course, Education Chair Rita Joseph, for working with all of us to make sure that the full weight of the council, together we bring, to fill the critical gaps left by lost federal funding when we have the final enrollment numbers in September. We will continue to fight to ensure that every student, parent, and public school teacher has the resources they need to thrive. And so, mindful of what we have achieved, with our eyes fixed firmly ahead on the work, I vote yes on this budget. And I would like to close by saying thank you to Speaker Adams and Chair Brennan for your leadership. Thank you to each of my fellow councilmembers for unapologetically advocating for your vision and values, and thank you to Chief of Staff Jeremy, Tanisha, FISA, Carlos, Mandela, Chima, Isha, and all our finance and speaker staff, and all the staff of my office for your countless hours behind the scenes right up until this stated meeting to get us to this moment we are at right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Lee?
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
First, I'm disclosing on the record of the council proceedings that the New York City Department of Education is funded in this budget and that we are adopting, and my child is a student at this entity who better be sleeping. Good evening, everybody. It's been a long road, but we now have a budget of which we can be proud, that prioritizes public safety, public good, youth and seniors, longtime residents, and new immigrants. We secured wins on priorities like expanded language access for all New Yorkers, which is a big deal, investments in hate crimes prevention, restoring sanitation services, historic increases in city funding for public schools, and COLAs, which are so, so, so desperately needed that we've been fighting for in the nonprofit sector for forever. I want to shout out in particular Minority Leader Joe Borelli for helping secure property tax rebate for working-class homeowners who we know are also struggling right now. And as the Chair of the Mental Health Disabilities and Aging Committee, the budget includes wins that will help us turn the tide of the current mental health crisis, like mental health supports and outreach for homelessness in New York, behavioral health for students, geriatric mental health, and I'm particularly proud that we secured pay parity for special education pre-K and daycare providers who do God's work each and every day and too often do not go unrecognized. Shout out to my three-year-old daycare, three-year-old's daycare. This isn't the end of the road, and I know Speaker Adams is committed to constantly reviewing the city budget year-round and adjusting it according to the needs of the city, and that's why we need to also continue fighting for education, especially to make up for the gap that is looming as we draw down on federal stimulus spending. And I'm therefore proudly voting yes, aye on all, on this budget, and want to thank the Speaker, Speaker Adams, Chair Brennan from the Finance Committee, Deputy Speaker Ayala for their leadership, as well as all the staff, Jeremy John, Tanisha Edwards, all the amazing finance staff, Isha, I'm gonna miss getting your calls, and who worked all the long hours and answered all the questions throughout this process, and especially to my staff as well. Thank you so much, and aye on all.
Thank you. Louis?
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Majority Leader. First, I want to disclose for the record, Coney Island Hospital and the MTA is funded in the budget, which we're adopting, and my brother and sister are both employees of these entities. Second, I would like to congratulate Speaker Adams and the leadership team for this process and for your hard work. As shared by many colleagues, this budget is not perfect. We have to do more for our schools, but we also have to celebrate the major wins for human service providers, to childcare services, mental health services, enhanced sanitation services, youth development, and much more. We have many investments to get New York City back and help address the many obstacles exacerbated by COVID-19 pandemic. Last, I want to extend my gratitude to the finance team and for their support and for sacrificing sleepless nights, early mornings, and providing support to the Brooklyn delegation. What does that mean? I know it was not easy dealing with us. I know we had millions of questions, but you understood our concerns. You came back. You took the pushback, and we are forever grateful for that support. We are not difficult Brooklynites, but you received a reminder on why we're fighting. We're fighting for essential needs for our district, our borough, our borough, our constituents, and most importantly, families. Thank you, Councilmember Brennan, Malcolm, Tanisha, Paul, Masees, Jimmy, FISA, Emre, Ray, Isha, Jonathan Yedden, Ivan, and May from Councilmember Osay's team for your support, for being rite-ized, and for answering every call. I vote aye on all.
Thank you. Marte?
I am disclosing on the record of the council proceeding that the Fortune Society is funded in the budget with, we are adopting, and my brother is associated with this entity, and that Thrive for Our Life is funded in this budget we are adopting, and my brother is associated with this entity, and that Lineage is funded in the budget we're, that we are adopting, and my brother is associated with this entity, and that David Prize is funded in the budget we are adopting, and my brother is associated with this entity. First, I want to thank my Budget Director, Renee Castellanos, for all the hard work that he's put into this. I vote aye, and post-budget, I look forward to ending the 24-hour workday for home attendance.
Thank you. Menon?
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
Okay, great. First, I just want to disclose on the record that the National September 11th Memorial Museum is funded in the budget we're adopting, and I'm a board member of this not-for-profit. And secondly, Street Squash is funded in the budget we're adopting, and my husband is associated with this not-for-profit. This year's budget reflects our commitment to an equitable recovery for all New Yorkers and to New York City's hard-working families. The budget provides essential funding to deliver fairer wages for human service workers and prioritizes affordable housing, youth services, childcare, sanitation, parks, small businesses, arts, and much more. It was a pleasure working with my colleagues advocating for the needs of New York City in passing this budget. I want to commend our Speaker, Adrian Adams, as well as all of my colleagues who work so diligently to obtain these vital services for New Yorkers, as well as to the Finance Division and Chair Brennan. And thank you so much, and I'm voting aye.
Thank you. Moya?
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
The last two budgets saw our city battling a deadly pandemic, and this year we find ourselves creating a budget that acknowledges that people in this city are still struggling. But this budget has been built to see us to recovery and respond to the calls of our constituents for cleaner streets, more summer jobs for our youth, and more capital investment in housing. We're for the first time investing $10 million for undocumented New Yorkers to access childcare, an investment that will directly impact my neighbors, taking a huge weight off of those parents' shoulders, parents that live throughout my neighborhood of Corona. We are increasing the city's FEPs vouchers to keep renters in their homes, renters like those living in Lefrak City. We're going to put money back into the pockets of homeowners, homeowners like those that live in East Elmhurst and in Corona through a property tax rebate. So today, I'm proud to stand here with my colleagues to vote in favor of a budget that raises to those challenges issued to us. And I want to thank Speaker Adams for her great and tireless work on this budget, to the mayor for working to create a budget aimed at improving the lives of everyday New Yorkers, and of course, I want to thank the Finance Division, Jeremy John, and also to my Chief of Staff, Megan Tadio, and I will proudly be voting in the affirmative. Thank you.
Thank you. Narcisse?
May I have permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
Even though this is my first budget as a member of the City Council, I quickly learned there is no such thing as a perfect budget, and equity will not be achieved in a single budget. However, I am proud to be part of the budget negotiation team and vote to pass my first city budget as a member of the City Council, under the leadership of the first Black female speaker in the history of this body, and 31 women strong. I am sure all my colleagues have items they would have liked to, to see included, or more funding provided to some initiative, including myself. We didn't get it all, but we scored major victories and made big investment in our communities. We expanded access to crucial physical and mental health care programs. As a nurse for three decades, I sure appreciate that. And by promoting community-based safety solutions, we will deter crime and violence and make our neighborhoods stronger and safer. Like I always say, crime issue don't occur in silo. It's a culmination of different issues, and we did understand, and we got it. We have a holistic approach to make sure the city is a better city and a greater city that it's supposed to be. No doubt, our work continues. We must remain vigilant and keep a close eye on the impact of our vote this evening, and started ready to advocate for critical budget needs for New Yorkers. We came here to defend and advocate for our, our constituent, and we will continue doing so. We continue to need our assistance throughout the years. But before I go, I cannot stop myself to say thank you to all the finance team. You know what you have done. You have patience with us. You have the understanding with us. As a rookie, I appreciate you. And thank you to my Chief of Staff, Si Joseph, my Budget Director, Frank Shay, Kim, Stephanie, Bunny, Irina, Evans. And thank you for all the work. Madam Speaker, you did it, and I appreciate your support, and I'm going to continue working and fight for my community. Thank you so much. God bless you guys. And let me disclose. I'm disclosing on the record of the council proceeding that Knowledge Driven Foundation is funded in the budget we are adopting, and my personal CPA and associate with this nonprofit. Making the impossible possible is funded in the budget we are adopting, and longtime friend and campaign volunteer, she associated with that nonprofit. It's Flatbush Village Incorporated, it's funded in the budget we are adopting, and my campaign treasurer is associated with the nonprofit. Thank you so much. God bless you all. Oh, 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 I for aye for everything.
After all that, we need your vote. Thank you. Councilmember Nurse?
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Two years ago, in the aftermath of George Floyd's death, I helped organize and lead a series of actions that culminated in the occupation of City Hall. One of the proudest moments of my life was helping to usher a mass movement into a specific set of municipal budget demands to divest a tiny fraction of resources from the NYPD and place it into lifesaving social services. Two years ago, we set up a screen on Park Row sidewalk and watched like a spectator sport as members, some of whom are here today, explain votes. And so it is absolutely surreal to be here. And as I've contemplated my vote today, I have thought deeply of that night, about why I'm here, and how far the movements for police accountability and transparency have taken us. The political environment in which this body was able to win so much this cycle is a direct show of strength and power of our movements, and the pressure we have created both outside this institution and now within. And without these movements, none of what has been gained this cycle would be possible. And without these movements, none of what has been gained this cycle would be possible and many of us would not be here, myself included. I believe in this body and I believe we will make incredible gains for New Yorkers together with the varying viewpoints we have. I believe this budget is the largest and arguably the most progressive budget we have seen with significant investments in youth programs, sanitation, green thumb gardens, urban forestry, and city housing vouchers. This body has secured significant and unprecedented transparency within the NYPD and DOC and funded childcare for undocumented families. I applaud you Speaker Adams and your leadership and as you lead this historic body. At the same time, this budget falls short on some basic needs. Some schools in my district are facing 10% to 30% cuts. Sanitation is still facing over 300 uniform headcount cuts. We urgently need more capital housing investments and we truly need more climate action through steeper investments in renewable energy and energy efficiency efforts that can create good green jobs. It is for these reasons why I'm not voting on, I'm voting no on M-50 and M-51. This is not against the hard work that my colleagues put in for phenomenal wins. This is my way of registering that the city budget is not where it needs to be and acknowledging that for the record for my working-class, black, Latinx, South Asian community that sent me here overwhelmingly. I am so grateful to be part of this historic body filled with incredible, passionate, talented, and immensely impressive women of color, women and colleagues. I take nothing here for granted, including the opportunity I've been given to lead on issues I'm deeply, deeply passionate about. I thank you all for all you do. I vote nay on M-50 and M-51 and aye on everything else.
Thank you. Osay.
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
This budget was achieved through months of good faith negotiations. I commend my colleagues and most especially the finance team for their work and recognize that the plan includes much to support, but it comes up short for too many New Yorkers, especially those in my district of Bed-Stuy and North Crown Heights. Since the first day of my term in the council, the top concern brought to my office has been housing. Tenants call us in tears facing eviction from the apartments and houses they have called home for decades. Homeowners come in desperate for help in their uphill battle against the sinister and growing practice of deed theft. Rent is skyrocketing in a city whose people struggle to get by. Most have no relief in sight. And this housing crisis subjects our neighbors to one of the cruelest forms of violence known to New York City, homelessness. New Yorkers ask for $4 billion investment in affordable housing and this budget we are given 2.5 over the span of five years. This budget is too similar to those that have defined New York City government for years. Many before me have mentioned that the NYPD ramones bloated and to note, this is now the largest police budget in our city's history while remaining among our least efficient guaranters of public safety. The activists in me stands with that 100%. And as a legislator with a say in this budget, I know that we are depriving ourselves of billions of dollars that could be invested in our schools, parks, and housing, areas in which increased government spending has a proven correlation to public safety. Ours is deeply unequal city with neighborhoods like mine trapped in generational affliction. I'm convinced that this adopted budget will be a commitment to only march slowly forward, placing our faith in incremental progress and setting our sights on some distant date to declare victory and liberation. I understand that this budget will pass. I applaud and respect my colleagues whose tireless work achieved an agreement to be proud of, especially the historic funding for culture and libraries which I fought for, and I'm happy for those who will receive deep capital housing and infrastructure investments in their communities. I cast this vote as a reminder of why we ran for office, how much more we can do for our people, and what I owe my own constituent neighbors who have been failed by incremental change for too long. I was elected to be one of 51 and to represent the 36th District. Thus, 51 members speak to the efficacy of this budget for their respective districts. This budget does not reflect the best for Bed-Stuy and North Crown Heights. It's the reason, it's for these reasons that I vote no and justice delayed is justice denied. I sought this office in pursuit of justice for New York, for Brooklyn, for Black life, and I was elected to see justice delivered. Today, that fight continues and I believe that we will win. I vote no on the capital and expense executive budget and aye on the rest. Thank you.
Thank you. Areola.
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
First, I'd like to disclose that the DOT is funded in this budget and my brother works for DOT and as well as sanitation and my son works for the Department of Sanitation. I'm proud to have been part of this council as together we prepared a budget that will help all New Yorkers. There is so much in this budget that we can be proud of as we move towards a better, cleaner, safer New York City. We have restored funding to the Department of Sanitation to once again have e-waste recycling, added on-street cleanings to mitigate the rat population that has gotten out of control in our city, and precision cleaning which will be our defense against the illegal dumping that plagues so many of our communities. We're going to be helping homeowners for the first time in 13 years with a property tax rebate check. We funded upgrades for schools, parks, libraries, our city's infrastructure, funded cultural organizations, veterans, and senior programs. And most importantly, we're restoring the NYPD budget to what it was prior to the Defund the Police campaign, which will give them the necessary tools to keep our city safe. We've done all this while still adding $750 million to our city's reserves so we can be prepared for any tough times that may come our way and $1.6 billion to our labor reserves. Thank you Speaker Adams, Minority Leader Joe Borelli, Finance Chair Justin Brennan, the members of the budget negotiating team, City Council Finance Team and staff, as well as my amazing Budget Director Kira Grace Donnelly, and the outstanding Chief of Staff Phyllis Inserillo, one of the hardest-working people I know. Therefore, I vote aye on all except for pre-considered M-73, Resolutions 221, 222, and 233, for which I vote no. Thank you.
Carr.
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
Thank you. First, I'd like to disclose on the record of these council proceedings that we're funding CUNY in this budget and my domestic partner is a student at CUNY. I just want to thank Speaker Adams, Majority Leader, Chair Brennan for leading such an accessible budget negotiating process and for keeping borough equity at the heart of all of our deliberations. In particular, I want to thank my leader and the Chair of our delegation in Staten Island, Minority Leader Borelli, for championing our neighborhoods and communities, and all my colleagues on the caucuses and delegations in which I sit for your support of all of our initiatives from Staten Island this year. Particularly, I want to thank all the Finance Division staff. School's almost out, guys, so congratulations on your wonderful work this budget cycle, particularly Tanisha Edwards and everyone in the Capitol and discretionary teams. And in particular, thanks to my Chief of Staff Giuseppe De Zario and Budget Director Loren Marie Centineo. And with that, I'm gonna vote aye on all except for pre-considered M-73, Resolutions 221, 222, and 233, on which I vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Palladino.
Good evening, everybody, and I too want to echo the sentiments of my colleagues here tonight. This has been a very exciting time for us all who entered in in freshman class, and I want to thank Speaker Adams for handling this with such grace and such dignity. Under fire, under pressure, you handled it amazing. So I want to say thank you. I want to say thank you to Chair Brennan for the total transparency that you did deliver on this budget as promised. I want to give a shout-out to Joe Borelli, our Minority Leader, and I want to also thank him for the property tax rebate. Also, along with Linda Lee, I look forward to serving, I cannot wait to serve, with the Mental Health Committee and move this city forward. We're in dire straits and I look forward to that. With that, I'd like to say I vote yea on all except for pre-considered M-73 and Resolutions 221, 222, and 233. Again, I thank you all. This is a body of unity. Whether we agree or disagree, we come together when it's most important and the heartbeat of this city is what's important above all else. So thank you all very, very much.
Thank you. Wrestler.
Thank you Majority Leader. I'd firstly like to thank the Speaker, Finance Chair Justin Brennan, all my colleagues, Jeremy, Tanisha, the whole council staff, and my own team, especially Marion Alexander and Jesse Towson, for their great work on so many fronts in this budget. We pushed back against the proposed addition of over 500 new corrections officers and instead kept the budget and the headcount of DOC flat year over year. As the co-chair of the Progressive Caucus, we fought for many necessary initiatives such as $60 million to secure much-needed raises for human services workers, fully funding city FEPs at $237 million to actually move families out of shelter and into housing, $10 million for childcare for undocumented families, a major expansion of basic rights and services for undocumented New Yorkers. I'm thrilled that we've doubled litter basket pickup to twice per day that will meaningfully help keep our streets cleaner. These are all critical investments that will actually make our city better. And we're making local investments in the 33rd that we urgently need, resources to support organizations that are organizing to stamp out hate in South Williamsburg, increased homeless outreach in downtown Brooklyn to address high-needs area, investments in our schools, our parks, new affordable housing initiatives. But there are real gaps in this budget too that we will absolutely need to address in the coming months, the affordability crisis that has become increasingly untenable in our city. We need better and more meaningful investments in new, affordable, and supportive housing and in our public housing developments. We need to rein in the NYPD budget and invest in care. We need to center the climate crisis in our budget more effectively. It pained me though, most of all, to speak to principals and parent leaders across my district and hear about the awful choices, the challenging choices that they now have to confront around larger class sizes, fewer art teachers and guidance counselors that are a result of this budget. I will do everything I can to work arm-in-arm with the Speaker and the whole council to fight for restorations for our schools, and I will lean on my school leaders for their best ideas to help fix this. I know that we can help support our schools in the months ahead to reverse some of the Mayor's insistence on cutting our budgets for schools. And I do vote aye and I want to thank the council for their work to make this budget happen.
Thank you. Richardson Jordan.
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
First, I would like to disclose on the record that my mother is an emergency room physician at Mount Sinai, Mount Sinai which is funded in this budget. While most have focused on additional funding for member-designated initiatives, the stark cuts across the board towards departments that provide essential social services are the defining element of this budget. The pattern is clear. The city divests and underfunds our public services, forcing council members and exterior organizations to fight for initiative funding to fill the void created. We should close the void. This, in this context, it was deemed acceptable to cut $1 billion in funding from DOE, including $245 million from our public schools and teachers. We did not increase and actually decreased the number of support services desperately needed for our children during this tumultuous time. This budget cuts funding where it is needed the most, our kids. Funding education is how we actually stop crime. The Mayor's justification for the cuts was the lower enrollment numbers from this past year, but this was actually an opportunity to reduce class size and provide the resources and infrastructure needed to keep cops out of our schools, not cut funding from our schools. We should all be concerned about the children and we should all be paying the more than lip service in voting no on this budget. The people should also know that this budget cuts $98 million from DOHMH, around half of such being taken from Child and Family Services, and $461 million is being cut from DHS. Despite the lip service around addressing the mental health crisis and with the increased violence in our communities, it was somehow deemed acceptable to cut funding to the departments in charge of mental health and homeless services. Mental health services and homeless services are gravely needed and should not be cut. How are we going to resolve the housing crisis with a cut to homeless services? And investing in mental health services actually reduces crime. The cut to geriatric mental health, creating a lack of service to our older adults, is also completely unacceptable. We should not be patting ourselves on the back for merely restoring just parts of this budget. Restoring funding to just parts of what was insufficient in the past and is still insufficient today is not the progressive action that New Yorkers demanded and expected or deserve from our leadership body. I am voting yes on pre-considered 224 because it's about transparency and no on all the rest.
Riley.
I'm disclosing on the record of the council proceedings that Martha Ferry High School is funded in the budget we are adopting and my wife is an employee at this entity. The New York City Department of Education is funded in this budget we are adopting. My daughter is a student at this entity and the NYC Administration for Children's Services is funded in this budget we are adopting. My sister is an employee at this entity and I vote aye.
Rivera.
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm disclosing on the record of the council proceedings that the New York City Police Department is funded in the budget we are adopting and my mother is an employee of this entity. I want to thank Speaker Adams, my colleagues, and immense gratitude to the finance team and the Committee on Criminal Justice. Above all, I want to thank advocates, public defenders, and impacted people for their diligent work and advocacy against the Mayor's proposal to add 578 uniform officers to the Department of Correction whose history of mismanagement has created a humanitarian crisis on Rikers Island that demands urgent action. We have an obligation to provide a safe and healthy environment for corrections officers and those detained on Rikers Island alike. And for too long, the Department of Correction has been allowed to wield outsized budgets with little transparency and accountability. And while we still have significant work ahead of us to address a systemic dysfunction and close Rikers for good, we have taken a big step by demanding data from the department ensuring they are meeting reporting requirements. With this budget, we've also taken steps to invest in our communities, and you've heard some of the wins, $237 million to fully fund city FEPs housing vouchers, $40 million for arts and cultural institutions, $30 million for the emergency food assistance program, and over $50 million in restoration to the Department of Sanitation for zero-waste initiatives among other services. This budget is the first step to deliver the resources New Yorkers urgently need right now for their families, their children, our elders, and the work does not end there. We can and must do better. The Mayor can count on hearing from me this summer. I vote aye.
Thank you. Salamanca.
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
I am disclosing on the record of the council proceedings that New York City Department of Parks and Recreation is funded in the budget we are adopting and my wife is associated with this entity and also that the Castle Hill Little League is funded in the budget we are adopting and my son is associated with this not-for-profit. And with that, I vote aye on all. Thank you.
Thank you. Sanchez.
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
First, I'd like to disclose on the record that I am pregnant and very sleepy. No, but in all seriousness, I'm disclosing that my brother is affiliated, associated with CUNY BMCC and he is my brother. He's an adjunct lecturer. And regarding the budget, I want to thank the Speaker, the Finance Chair, and all of the central staff for all of the time that you put into creating this year's fiscal budget, this year's budget. And also want to thank my colleagues. This is a historic day for me. I'm making my own history. A lot of us are voting on our first budget. And the first thing that I want to say is that I am proud to vote in support of the budget because it is going to do so much for young people. Record investments in some rising, some youth employment project, more compensation for special education and daycare providers, career and technical education, the list goes on and on, and I am very proud to be supporting those initiatives and those budget items. But as the City Council's Chair of the Committee on Housing and Buildings, I would be remiss if I did not confront the reality that we are not investing enough in the capital funding for the city's housing crisis. This council asked for $4 billion to be invested per year, a campaign promise made by the Mayor. And... made by the mayor, and where the budget this year is going to fall short. By investing in two-point, by investing, I told you, I'm sorry, by investing five billion dollars over the next ten years, we're merely scratching the surface at a twelve-point-five percent funding rate. But I will acknowledge this via my vote as a down payment on the future of housing in the city of New York, and also acknowledge that there is so much good that, that is coming in from this budget. So City PEPs vouchers are being fully funded, finally, at an unprecedented two-hundred-and-thirty-seven million dollars. We're also funding low-income vouchers. We're bringing up the cost-of-living adjustment for our human service workers, sanitation improvements, fare fares are being fully funded. All of these are going to make an incredible difference in a district like District Fourteen. So with that, I vote aye, and thank you, Madam Speaker, and all of the leadership for your hard work. You want to?
Thank you. Schulman.
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
I ran for office because it was time for a change. The coronavirus exposed the glaring inequities that exist within our city, and this budget creates a robust pathway to address the way we approach healthcare, housing, public safety, and nearly every other aspect of how city government interfaces with our lives. As a new member of a historic council led by a majority female body, I am proud of a budget that prioritizes such vital issues as seniors, childcare, public safety programs, particularly for hate crimes in the Jewish and AAPI communities, cleaner streets, youth programs, parks, tax relief for homeowners, including those who live in co-ops and condos, and so many other initiatives. I want to thank Speaker Adrienne Adams for her leadership, and I want to say, Madam Speaker, that I am proud to be considered a member of the Adams family. The finance staff led by Tanisha Edwards, Finance Chair Justin Brennan, Deputy Speaker Diana Ayala, I will miss you keeping us in B and T in line with your firm hand and gavel, and loud gavel. And my Chief of Staff, Osia Klass, who shepherded the budget for my office, all of my staff, Seth, Javier, Kevin, and Ian, who kept things going in the district while I was here at City Hall working on this important investment in our communities, and I want to thank all my colleagues on the council who helped make this possible. Together, we will make our city thrive again as we recover from COVID-19. With that, I am disclosing on the record of the council proceedings that the Office of the Mayor of the City of New York funded in the budget we are adopting, that my brother is associated with this entity, and with that, I vote aye on all.
Thank you. Stevens.
Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
Good evening. I want to say how proud I am of this council and the budget that we produce. Although this budget is not perfect, it has taken major steps in the right direction. We have accomplished some major wins that I want to highlight: sixty million dollars baseline in the budget for human service workers. I'm so happy and proud about this because I know firsthand that this will make a significant impact for thousands of families across the city. Nineteen-point-seven million in doubling the slots for Work, Learn, Grow. This is another amazing win as we reimagine the workforce for young people all across the city. And fourteen million for community schools, which will have a direct impact on students and get them the services that they need on a daily basis, are all amazing wins. As Chair of the Youth Service Committee, I can't tell you how excited about the additional terms and conditions in this budget that will bring transparency and give me additional information that I can use to hold DY City accountable and others accountable to ensure that we are funding allocated for our city is, in our city for youth is being made to the largest impact. I want to thank our fearless Speaker Adrienne Adams, who made some great efforts to make the budget process inclusive and transparent and getting input from all members. Thank you. I would like to also thank Finance Chair Justin Brenner for all your hard work, the amazing financial team.
Brenner?
Brenner? Oh, yeah. I said, I said your name wrong?
For chocolate.
Brennan? I would like to also disclose that I'm tired. I'm not pregnant, but I'm also tired. It's past my bedtime, and I'm using, I'm, don't stop the clock. Whatever. Y'all know who it is, JB, that guy. I appreciate, I appreciate all the long hours that the finance team put together to support all fifty-one of us through this process. I appreciate you taking all the calls from me and my Chief of Slash/Legislative Director/ Bud Director Kate Connolly for all the work that we've done and being so responsive. I'm very proud to vote yes for this budget and aye on all. I don't think I did my disclosures, did I?
Not yet.
Okay. I'm tired.
Go ahead.
I'm disclosing on the record that my daughter works for Colombian Presbyterian Hospital, and she's also a student at CUNY, which is also interesting because that was the same disclosures Bob Holden had, so I'm done.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Ung.
I vote aye on all.
Thank you, Councilmember. Velasquez.
I'm disclosing on the record of the council proceedings that the New York City Department of Environmental Protection is funded in the budget we are adopting, and my husband, Mr. Jeff Lynch himself, that I very much love you, baby, I know you're watching, is an employee of this entity, and that Samaritans of New York is funded in the budget and we're adopting, and my brother is a board member of this entity. I typically tend to say, I like to be short and sweet, just like myself, so I just want to take the moment to recognize the incredible, incredible finance team. I've been in your shoes in another life, and it's not easy. And thank you for sharing your personal stories on how this will impact us as a city. It was our guiding light. It was important to hear about the different funding, especially how it hits our community, Black and Browns, and how we've been ignored for so long, and having a speaker that got your back, Jim, and that we have your back because you have our back. This wasn't easy. It was never going to be, but we have an incredible B and T staff, team, and thank you, JB, you know how much I love you. Diana, you know how much I love how you scream at me, because I don't pay attention, but I love you anyway. Selvina, thank you. Thank you for being you, and most importantly, thank you, Speaker Adams, for believing in all of us. I vote aye on all.
Thank you, Councilmember. Vernikov.
Permission? Thank you. Permission to explain my vote?
Go ahead.
Before everyone falls asleep. First of all, I want to thank the members of the Council Finance Committee team and Finance Chair Brennan for putting in long days and nights to make this budget happen. I also want to thank what I like to call the best minority leader, Joe Borelli, and all my colleagues. I would like to thank Speaker Adams for her generous support to capital projects that are so vital to my district. Your support for the Two Parks Projects will greatly benefit many families and children from diverse backgrounds in my district. I also want to thank my office staff and especially my Budget Director, Mary, who has been working day and night to help our district for the last twenty years while wearing so many hats. I know you're watching, Mary. Given the amount of complaints we get for dirty sidewalks and rats, I am especially ecstatic with regard to sanitation allocation of twenty-two million, more to increase litter-basket service above pre-pandemic levels, twenty million more to expand the organics collection program, twelve-point-four million more to precision cleaning teams and lock cleaning, and five million for a waste contannization study and a thousand rat-resistant litter-baskets. As I sit here tonight, voting on my first budget, I want to thank you, Speaker, for your support for District Forty-Eight and for showing us that working together, we can get things done. With that, I vote aye on all, except no on pre-considered M-73 and Resolutions Two-Twenty-One, Two-Twenty-Two, and Two-Thirty-Three. Thank you.
Thank you. Williams.
Last but not least, I am disclosing on the record, what?
Jaeger.
What?
Jaeger.
Oh, no, y'all better not start that clock. I didn't listen to all y'all speak.
Go ahead.
All right. I'm disclosing on the record of the council proceedings that the City University of New York is funded in the budget we are adopting, and I am a student at this entity. Also, the Queens Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated is funded in this budget we are adopting, and I'm associated with this entity, and also the New York City Department of Education is funded in this budget we are adopting, and my niece is associated with this entity, as well as one of my, members of my team, and Jamaica Athletic and Learning Center is funded in this budget, and a member of my team is also associated with this entity. This city budget is not just about numbers. It is about the lives of millions of people that call New York City home. When I ran as councilmember, I wanted to ensure that the community members in the Twenty-Seventh Council District were properly served by city government, and while more work and resources are always needed, this budget is a great path forward. This budget funds so many groups that will assist with homeownership, cure violence programs, schools, NCR centers, the cost-of-living adjustments for human service workers like my mom, Linda. We delivered a budget that not only secured funding but also increased our budget power to advance accountability and transparency of our agencies. Inside the Twenty-Seventh is a community of majority homeowners, and as a homeowner myself, I am excited about the property tax rebates. As Chair of the Civil and Human Rights Committee, I am also excited that we restored funding for the Source of Income Unit. I am proud to be delivering on our promises to bring a budget that reflects New Yorkers' priorities and invest in our communities. This budget is not the end, but the beginning, and I look forward to continuing to work with city agencies, the administration, to identify and advocate for critical funding needs where this budget might have come up short. And I also want to thank the Speaker, the Finance Chair, my boo, Justin Brennan, and also the finance team in my office for all your hard work. We did it for the district. Hashtag Queens Get the Money, and I vote aye on all.
Thank you. Councilmember Juan.
As I reflect on the last few months, starting from the third trimester of my pregnancy when this budget cycle started, to a few weeks after giving birth, being on the phone with finance members who were kind enough to debrief me one-on-ones when I couldn't be here in person for B and T after having a C-section. It is, it is an amazing experience that I was given, and I'm so thankful to Speaker Adrienne Adams and the leadership staff, Chief of Staff Jeremy John, and it is not lost on me that I am sitting here before you less than twenty years ago when I could not read English myself. And with the advocacy of those before me, like Councilmember Carlos Machaca and other immigrants who have advocated, I am so incredibly grateful to all the finance staff that has worked with me and all of my colleagues, like Councilwoman Bishohana Hanif, who has made sure that we are continuing to fight for all people and that I can safely vote yes on this budget, even with its shortcomings, knowing that this is only the beginning that marks the fiscal cycle, where we will continue to advocate for more transparency and accountability for the NYPD, and we will continue to advocate for fair funding for education with our federal funding continuing to be in flux. And I know that the six-point-seven million dollars in adult literacy totaling twenty million dollars is only the beginning for parents like my mother and my father who will learn to speak English here in this country, and eight-point-six million dollars to support language access and expansion, as well as the five-million-dollar commitment. Thank you to CFO Tanisha Edwards, as well as Jeremy John, for allowing this to happen so that we can have community interpreter banks and worker-owned language co-ops, so that those who are culturally competent will be the ones who are providing translations, especially in times of emergency like COVID-19 and Hurricane Ida. So I thank you to all of the advocates, African Communities Together, Asian American Federation, MASA NYC, Council Finance, my Chief of Staff, who brought me all the way here, Lorena Lucero, my Legislative Director, Kevin Kapropsky, my Budget Director, Nancy Corona, and just the entire staff of Finance who have brought us all the way here, and I vote aye on all. And I'm so incredibly grateful to be part of this budget for the first time, where I know that in all of its entirety, with housing access, affordability, and for our education, for youth funding, and all that it is in its entirety, I vote aye on all.
Thank you, Councilmember. Jaeger.
Mr. President, I know you want a speech from me.
Do you want my honest opinion on that one?
I love this body very much, and I'm very grateful to have the privilege of serving here. I love most of my colleagues, so I'm going to let you off easy. I vote aye on all, with the exception of Resolutions Two-Twenty-One, Two-Twenty-Two, M-73, and accompanying Resolution Two-Thirty-Three, and I wish you all a good night.
Aye.
That's the historic night, right?
Borelli.
Permission to explain?
Go ahead.
Has anyone not been thanked yet? I want to disclose on the record that the New York City Department of Education is funded in the budget, and my wife is an employee of this entity. She's a good teacher, I'm told. The South Shore YMCA is funded in the budget, and my son is associated. He's not a good student, I'm also told. That said, I vote aye on all, except pre-considered M-73, Resolutions Two-Twenty-One, Two-Twenty-Two, and Two-Thirty-Three. Thank you. Two, oh, excuse me, Two-Thirty-Three, I apologize. There is no Two-Twenty-Three, so Two-Thirty-Three. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you. One, one moment. Powers.
I'm voting aye on all and proudly. I, I want to say before I close this down, the very, very big, oh, hold on, we have Councilman Riley.
I just want to disclose to the record that both my daughters are associated with the YMCA as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I am going to resume. I just want to briefly say a very big congratulations and thank you to many people here who delivered a very, I think, powerful budget. I first want to thank my friend and my Finance Chair, who worked really, really hard to get from the starting point to the end, and my friend, Justin Brennan, who deserves a lot of credit for putting up with a lot of nonsense but getting us to a really good place. And, you know, I say, I say often, we're all very, very lucky to be here. I've known Justin for a very long time. I used to say, I knew him when he had hair and he played in a band, and to watch him do this work is really a proud moment for me. I want to say a very big thank you to Tanisha and the whole finance team. You guys also, it's a lot of work that we don't see and we don't get to experience or feel, but it's work that gets us to this day, and it's year-round, and I think you guys also deserve a very big round of applause as well. And somebody who's fielded more phone calls for me and many of us, I think, than he would like to admit, and is probably glad this is over, but has done it with patience, at least in my end. I don't know about other people, but I know he's been patient with me, but he's a really, I've known him for years, and he's a generally great guy, and Jeremy John, thank you for everything you have done. And I don't, I have personally many other friends who are on the other side, too, who worked on this, my friend Jeff Rotis, Jess Carano, and other people who on that side also deserve, and the whole OMP team who deserve a lot of applause as well. I just, and I have to just say to Speaker Adrienne Adams, having spent a couple of late nights trying to talk through some issues in the last few days and to watch this process from beginning to end, I think everybody here, even if they disagree with the final outcome of the vote, said the same thing, which is this is a budget that made significant progress on the work that we've done here in the past, that you've done as a B and T member and as part of this council member. It represents significant progress in this city, helping people, and if you look, talk to staff, you talk to members, you're seeing the direct impact of the work that you're voting on here today. I think it's a great budget. I think you deserve a lot of credit for it, and I really thank you for letting all of us be part of building a process together, so I want to give you a big round of applause And with that, I got to do my duties here. I proudly vote aye. I'm also disclosing on the record that the council proceedings that my mother is an employee of Mount Sinai, and we are voting to include them in the adopted budget here today. With that, I vote aye, and congratulations.
Thank you. Speaker Adams.
I'd like to disclose on the record of the council proceedings that Pearls and Ivy Foundation of Queens is funded in the budget we're adopting, and that is a part of my chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, and I am associated with that entity. Allen Senior Center is funded in the budget we're adopting, and I am associated with this entity, entity, as is the Greater Allen AME Cathedral, of which I am a member, and it is associated with this entity. With that, I am extremely overwhelmed at this moment. with this entity. With that, I am extremely overwhelmed at this moment and humbled by my colleagues who have worked so, so hard for their districts, for the interests of their districts and the people of the city of New York. Colleagues, this is your budget. This is something that no matter what anybody says, this is something for you to be proud of. We did this for you. This is not the Speaker's budget. This is not the finance team's budget. This is the city council's budget. This is the budget for your district that you will be able to be proud of with what you will have delivered tonight in the adoption of this historic budget for the New York City Council. This is your budget to be proud of. And I stand on that. I thank you, colleagues, so, so much for your hard work. I want to say happy birthday to Joanne Areola for tomorrow. And I also just want to give another special thank you to our CFO, Tanisha Edwards, Isha Wright, Jonathan, the entire team. Oh, my goodness, Paul Simone, the late nights. Oh, my gosh. And really, everyone, Dr. Ray Majewski, Misses, Emra, everyone on the finance division. Where would be, where would we be without you in this New York City Council? I said every time we walked into B and T, we knew that we were getting a tremendous master class in economics. And that is because of the genius of the finance team, and I thank you. And I really appreciate you for that. I'd also like to thank those that keep me together, Super Chief Jeremy John. Faisal Ali. Special Counsel Carlos Beato. And the person that keeps me glued together, my executive assistant, Nikki Smith. I thank you all so much for your hard work. The stated meeting of June 13, 2020 is hereby adjourned.
Well, I gotta read the vote. I gotta read the vote. I gotta read the vote.
And I vote aye on all.
Please sit down. Hold on. You gotta vote. How do you vote, Madam Speaker?
I vote aye on all.
All, one second, folks.
Oh, we have an adjourned, and I'm sorry.
All items. I gotta read the tally and we'll gavel out.
We need the numbers.
All right, folks. All items on today's general order. Guys, can we just get a quick minute here, please?
Quiet, please.
Quiet down. Please take your seats. All items on today's general order calendar are adopted by a vote of 50 in the affirmative, 0 in the negative, and 0 abstentions, with the exception of M50 in Resolution 225 and 226, 44 in the affirmative, 6 in the negative, and 0 abstentions. M51 in Resolution 227 and 228, 44 in the affirmative, 6 in the negative, 0 abstentions. Intro 347, adopted by a vote of 48 in the affirmative, 2 in the negative, and 0 abstentions. Resolution 221, adopted by a vote of 41 in the affirmative, 9 in the negative, and 0 abstentions. Resolution 222, adopted by a vote of 41 in the affirmative, 9 in the negative, and 0 abstentions. Resolution 223, adopted by a vote of 48 in affirmative, 2 in the negative, and 0 abstentions. M35 in Resolution 232, with adopted by a vote of 48 in affirmative, 2 in the negative, and 0 abstentions. M52 in Resolution 229, adopted by a vote of 48 in the affirmative, 2 in the negative, and 0 abstentions. M71 and Resolution 230, 48 in the affirmative, 2 in the negative, 0 abstentions. M72, Resolution 231, adopted by a vote of 48 in affirmative, 2 in the negative. M73 in Resolution 233, adopted by a vote of 41 in the affirmative, 9 in the negative. And M1 through 26 and 53 through 56, adopted by, adopted by a vote of 48 in affirmative and 2 in the negative. I now formally declare the executive expense-revenue contract budget, the executive capital budget, and the community development program for fiscal year 2023, all as modified and all in accordance with the New York City Charter, have hereby been adopted at 11:05 PM on the 13th day of June 2022. I'll now call on Speaker Adams to close today's meeting.
The stated meeting of June 13, 2022 is hereby adjourned.